Here, just like you know she's got a line she's not supposed to cross. Don't make this.
Yeah, I see it. They threw her across the room.
Stay here.
He won't complain one minute. He's just happy he's at table.
Yeah, yeah. Not a corner here.
Yeah, we don't have to be like.
Derek feels like he's really.
He's tapping somebody on the e or my bed or my cat.
Are we ready, girls, boys?
I don't have one foot.
Let's go.
George, this is computer. It'll be 2.3 minutes.
How can I?
What do you want in?
Where's your lady?
Yes. I am not computer literate.
Where else does he work?
The paper.
I know, but.
He's got graduation photos tonight.
I didn't send the letter to him.
I'm a tight deadline.
He said, okay, I want to.
You're stuck with me tonight.
I'm not stuck with you. We're proud to have you here.
Thank you. You're stuck with me. All of your settings.
Go pay attention then.
It is nice.
Is that Anthony then?
Get around.
You're ready.
I'm in black. That rocks all the three lines.
We probably.
Well, yesterday at noon, I had two of them call me back to back and I.
Well, I need to know how to do that then. That's what you were talking about? Okay, you got to show me later on.
Oh.
I got mail. Are we ready, George? I'm meeting the order at 7:04. Roll call. George Knoll.
Erica Martin.
Sean Harley.
Randy Snead.
Angela Lucas.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Long.
Stand for pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from 5:04, 2022, regular session.
Motion to approve the minutes from 5:04.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from 5:04, 2022, regular session. Any further comment on this? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Citizens input. No citizens, no input, and then pass it. Chuck, you want to do now or do you want to do yours later on?
Can you do it now?
Just. Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Just wanted to give you an update where we're at with unsafe ordinances and buildings. We've got four letters out. The last one, the fifth one, goes out tomorrow morning to our first five that we talked about at our last meeting. So we've got the letters out. Three of them have received them. One will get there tomorrow and the other one probably on Saturday. So that's where we're at, working with Mr. Jones. And I think that's it. We've got, had a lot of calls about things throughout the town as far as questions in building and that sort of thing. And I think that's pretty much it. That's what we've handled and what we've done. Anything else? Lisa.
I'd like to ask the board if it'd be all right. I know Randy and I have both been by the church, uh, church street property we've been working on over there. You know, it looks pretty good just from drive by now. I'll admit, but I would like to just have a final, so I have Chuck actually go down there, visit, make sure everything's in compliance and sign off on it.
I don't think there was anything out of compliance safety wise. It was more of a nuisance thing. Am I right, Derek, or on that?
Moore.
Uh, Moore, Moore's.
Yeah, I can think of his name.
No, Moore, we're waiting to basically have caller, Mr. Caller.
He was there today and, or yesterday.
Okay.
So I went down there and looked. As far as I know, he got everything done. And I didn't get there when he was finished. I was there while he was working, but Sean brought up there was one, something wrapped up in a tarp laying out by the street or something.
It's not by the street. It's in front of, between the boat and the street. Again, it's a blue, it's a blue temporary tarp. You know how long it was now?
He cleaned, he cleaned the two buildings up that were mentioned. I mean, and he cleaned the ground up. He, they raked it and picked up everything and he smoothed it out with his backhoe. So it really does look good, that part. But I'll check on that before we reset that.
I just thought.
No, 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 we're not releasing anything.
We're not releasing.
The next step is basically we have to go back to court.
Okay.
And then get a judgment for the amounts that we paid for the caller construction to take care of that thing. And that's going to be quite a bit of money.
Right.
And I, I don't have any problem with Chuck taking a look at it.
Okay.
But so long as the council is satisfied, like we're good to go in terms of we don't have any more issues.
Right.
Great. Then we can set a damages hearing and then move that forward with the courts.
I guess, I guess that's where I was coming from in this whole process was, uh, it looks, I can live with the way it looks right now. I just kind of wanted to, somebody that's had their feet on the ground there to take a look at it again and make sure that, you know, something I can't see, report that back and then we can go forward with Derek's process.
Yep. Um, is it okay, after I expected, I sent out an email to?
Yes, fine.
Yeah, so we can speed up the process.
That's absolutely fine, yes.
Go ahead.
So how about we make a motion so long as we as the council, I shouldn't say we, but you as the council, uh, feel that the properties in compliance at this point, then we can move the board. I can request a damages hearing. That's going to be 30, 45 days down the road, but I can, yeah, move that forward.
Are you doing this as an attorney or citizen?
We're, we're doing this under citizens input, but that is fine.
I will, I will make a motion to have Chuck DeWitt look at the Moore property now that we feel that it is fairly complete as far as the cleanup goes and, uh, report back to the council via email and to the attorney. And if, uh, everything is all right, therefore give the attorney permission to go ahead and finish his processes that he has to do with collecting damages.
One second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to everything that Sean said. To have Chuck DeWitt check out the Moore property, make sure that it meets all safety and everything requirements. And then he'll send an email to the town council, to attorney Derek Jones, and then Derek will set up a time with the court systems to, uh, take care of the legal action on all of this. Uh, any further comments on any of this? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Randy, do you want to do the library letter?
Yes. Uh, summer reading program, Artis Public Library Seeking Awards as a incentive prize for the 2022 Summer Reading Adventures titled Oceans of Possibilities. And there'll be active activities and prizes for all the participants and preschool through all adult age levels. We appreciate any consideration in form of prizes or financial contribution you can make toward helping make our program successful. And then they go on and on. And each supporter will receive an eight and a half by 11 poster to indicate your business supported the 2022 Summer Adventures. What did we give her last year? What you've got written down here handwritten? So last year we gave her $250 toward this.
That's what we give every year for effort.
So since.
I'm making a motion, we give the library $250 for the reading.
One second, Pat.
We have a motion and a second to give the Artis Public Library $250 towards their summer reading program. Any further comments?
Uh, yeah. Again, we've had this discussion before. It's a taxing entity asking another taxing entity for money, in my opinion. It's only $250. It's not a breakage, but it's a principle of it.
Okay. I was looking for something. Still forward.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
See, I don't mind that we just get a little bit more. That's just me though.
Does the teacher move them?
I mean, you know, it's a way for us to, where our kids continue to read during the summer. Um, you know, it helps. Every little bit helps.
What do they do with their tax money?
Can I, okay, Sean, here's, here's my feeling.
I could say a lot about that.
They, they have a limited amount of tax money to run their facility on.
So do we?
No, no, we don't. Our tax money is, we get a little more than they do, plus we have ways of getting money they don't have.
Well, that's beside the point. If you're running twice as big an organization.
I'd like to get 300, but that's my bit of it.
You guys can do what you want.
Only because things are starting to cost a little bit more. If it's been like that for years.
I'm just saying, to me, it's a principle of it.
No, I understand. I understand where you're coming from.
Council, the new.
Oh, you know where I stand. I've been giving for 14 years.
13 years anyhow, right?
This will be the 14th, yeah.
Okay.
If we supported them, we, we worked with them back when they, when the Oprah grant was going on to get them out of the library. I mean, the fire department went over right on the trailer and the fire department moved them so we wouldn't have to pay a fine and lose all the grant money. So I mean, it's not like we don't work with each other, one end to the other. I understand what Sean's saying also. We get that too. But it's just like the fire department. It's tax based and we have fundraisers all the time. We give, so I'm still in favor of giving the 250.
Nothing.
Stay, I think it's to stay the 250 for now, Lee.
Anybody else? Erica, you have anything one way or the other?
I'm good with the 250. I'm sure other businesses are helping minimal stuff, so.
The motions and a second. We have a motion and a second. No more comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion passed 4 to 1. Anything else? Let's see the things. Lisa, is this on the agenda?
Yes. After, way down on new business.
Oh, I see. Okay. Uh. Next attorney report, I guess.
Yep. Chuck stole my thunder on half of it, so that's good. That really is good. Um, but yeah, we did, Chuck and I have been working on these letters and a batch of three went out last week. One went out today. I think the other one's going out tomorrow, so we're getting those at least hopefully taken care of for the letters. We, people responding. We'll see. Um, the other thing I wanted to let you know was the last meeting, we had the approval of the bids for the utility building that got sent out to the pilot. They indicated the publication dates would be May 7th and May 14th, which obviously those days have passed. Um, I don't have proof of publication back yet, uh, but we are on track to basically accept and receive bids no later than 3:00 PM on June 13th. We're going to have a bid opening, uh, meeting at that point in time. A meeting on June 15th is when those will be presented to the council. So just let you know that that's on track. Hopefully we get a better batch of bids and we're better in shape to move that forward. So I had to report.
Will we, this, I, I have to add this. That house on Maple Street, um.
Wait, no.
210.
210. 210 for the guy who's been putting siding in windows and stuff.
Get the windows in.
And, and he's brought the siding up. He's putting more siding.
Okay, Mr. Callad.
Yeah. But, uh, did, did he get a ticket for his grass?
Maybe I'd have to.
It's really bad, so is that something we do as a separate thing?
He can do that.
I think, I think I did do something with that one.
Would you check into that?
I can't, I don't have the.
That's fine.
But yeah.
But that, that's just kind of reported. He has, he has started deciding, he's got quite a bit of it on.
They have the report, don't they?
Mm-hmm. Are you trying to me?
I talked to Cory.
Yeah, but that was for this month. That was last month. And this would have been this month. And I don't, that's on my thumb drive.
That's okay. That's okay. I just was checking on that.
I think last weekend Cory worked with like 20 some tickets for grass.
Or more than that. 34 on the Friday and then, yeah. I think it was like 40 some.
I know, I talked to him on Sunday, I heard, cause I brought some stuff down.
I'm working from memory, but you've got to remember that this, this case is relatively old.
Yeah.
But I think at the time there was some grass and weeds and that was an issue and I think it was taken care of at one time. If this spring it's getting bad again, yes, it can still fall under our existing order so long as we included that. And I'm working from memory, so I'm thinking that it did, but I can't promise you that. Um, but I know the big thing is the house and the rest of it.
He is working on the house. He's got quite a bit of siding on it now, so it's just, it looks terrible around there, but other than that, yeah. While I'm on this, I've never seen some of the yards get mowed all of a sudden. I ride around and everybody's got their yard mowed.
Actually, I can't remember. I think I did for that one, but we had, I think 15 or six. I'd have to look. I'll give you, if I get my report, I'll give it to you.
That's fine. Attorney's done.
I'm done.
Motion to accept the attorney report?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept attorney report. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Other old business. Uh, I'm going to bring this one up. Val Harley, we're worried. Food Truck Friday is coming. Art, you really think we could be in there in two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Jamie, what we doing?
We're, we're set to go where we had it before.
We can still.
Yeah.
So do we need, uh, I guess we're just have to continue down here, the northern part of town.
Yeah, everything's still there.
All right. Cause we have to get letters out to our vendors right away and so she wanted to make sure I said, well, I'll bring it up tonight. That's what we'll do then. The first, uh, June, I'm in my calendar, but, uh, the food truck Friday in June will be.
10th.
Aye.
Yeah.
Who's got a calendar handy?
June 10th.
10th. Well, June, 3rd is the first June.
Second. Second Friday.
Yeah, it's the 10th.
June 10th. Okay, June 10th, Food Truck Friday will be downtown still.
Somebody else helped to do trash. I'll be out of state. I normally do the trash.
Well, you can, you can hire somebody now. I mean, it's your job.
I'm trying to find somebody. I'm trying to find somebody, but I don't, I don't be there.
Well, just leave your truck and trailer or we can get to it.
Okay.
On that note though, today was, uh, the first time we had a citizen come in and want to complain about the downtown. First one, but they're going to start coming in.
About what?
Uh, the progress and why it's not getting done and, and why they're coming up and, yeah. So first one. I'm just saying, once we're done, it starts.
And it's not, you know, it's not the town's fault.
Well, I'm the first one that came in here and asked who to talk to, so.
Do you get the phone number of Indiana?
No, I do not.
Need to figure out how to get callbacks in these contracts. Move their timelines. We get told timelines and time after time after 10, project after project, they don't complete even close all night.
Better money.
Yeah. They had some weather, they had some, it took them a long time at first, right? They didn't get to start when they wanted to start and.
I don't have a comment in an open meeting.
Yeah, I understand.
I know where you're going. I know where you're. I don't have a comment.
Okay. New business.
Old business. This might be for Mark or Jamie. What do we have on the possible annexation on Dewey? We talked anymore about that? So we can put water sewer.
Lot for the building, for the house in Kenworth?
No, no, for Dewey Street all the way out. Snyder's and right there.
Yeah, we got a, so we've got a request that came out. He's working on that. That's to me. Okay, and that's, yeah, this is a. We just got that like within the last week or so. Yeah, but it's basically, it's creating a pipeline of property that's not annexed. And that's what causes me a little concern.
Okay.
It's one of those things, my gut tells me I'm not sure this is appropriate. And when I look at the statutes, I don't see how, when I look at the statutes, I feel like, yes, it's possible, but my guts tell me again, it's like, I don't think that's right. And it would be an absolute blessing if the remainder of the property owners would say, we would like to be annexed too. I'm not sure. And we've not even tried them. Of that. Do you want to send them, should we send them a letter? What do you want? What do you think? We can, and I would feel much better about moving that forward. And then at least if we had a denial. I mean, I see what he's saying. I also see the other side, look at the other side of it. He has the most property that butts up to the city limits on the backside now. So he, he does meet the statute, statute qualifications for getting annexed, but as he said, that'll leave the three properties virtually in the middle. No, not virtually. It's absolutely, it's like an island of.
Right, I understand, but we send out a letter explaining the pros and cons, obviously. The pros to these people, explain to them, not just send them a letter and say, we want to.
We can explain that there's been a request and.
And why they're joining or.
Yeah. Okay, I'll get the property owner's names and.
Oh, I, I can do that, but is that what the council wants to do? I think we need a nice informational letter should be sent out on why, yes.
Some of them have water and not sewer. Some of them have some of those things, so we need to, I've got that list somewhere.
Okay.
Jamie, I went through that one day.
We're just talking about the property owners along Dewey Street to.
The south side. You got three of them. You got Thayers, Dunlap, and that other last one's Rambel.
And Pooch Snyder's in there somewhere.
He's the one that sent the request to be.
So he wants to be annexed, okay.
Just so you know, he split his property off, selling an acre and a half, so there, that puts another owner in there also.
Corner piece, Chuck?
Yeah.
That field?
Um, the field, it's, it's long.
They're the ones that are really requesting it though, aren't they?
Amberly.
They're the ones that started this, yes. But they did get. I. No doubt that. Well, and Snyder came in, I mean, he talked to me, he's for it now. He told me, I didn't know why it never happened. I'm like, eh, eh, but we probably ever asked. No, it's, no, it's not why at all, because it just, it started and they were a boundary. We did things to the south of them, which made sense because that's deer field. Um, and so it just, things developed around them and that makes sense as to how that happened, but it's left a little peninsula and now you've got one guy that was on the end says, I'll be next and.
Yeah.
Just to add to that, so everybody knows, Snyder cannot divide his land again. He has, he took an acre and a half off of 10.12 or something, so, um, he can't divide that again because.
He's under.
It's, it can't be, there'll be too many people on that property. So the only way he can divide his property again is to get it annexed so he can put smaller lots in there.
Like a subdivision.
Yes, just so everybody knows. Is that his intention? I don't know, but that's where he's at. That's all he can do.
Well, I could see that being, I mean, I could see that being his, uh, to benefit to wanting to consider that. We're putting a subdivision right behind him, so I mean, I mean, no begrudgment there as far as that. Let me get this right. Some of them properties do there have, some are partial town utilities already.
Yes, so if they have town utilities, if they have water, let's say, they're currently paying one and a half times our normal rate, which is what they were in states. So they're paying a higher rate because they're not.
It would be a benefit to them to be in it, right?
Yes, to be annexed, they would pay our regular rate.
And that probably could be put in that letter in such a, and structured in such a way to, you know, give them some reasoning.
It'd be different time trade, it'll be different.
Yeah, the trade off.
Yeah. But that's why I said draft.
I, I agree with George.
Yeah, it's already in our electric, so that has no different bearing on it. They shouldn't be getting trash from us. That shouldn't, I'd have to double check and make sure, but they, that shouldn't be something that should be offered anytime. I mean, there's no, you have to be a resident to be able to get trash.
Derek, would you like a motion and a? Fill down that.
Big buzz.
I'll make a motion to, Derek, you got to draft the letter?
Yep.
You want to help draft the letter or?
No, I'll draft the letter and I'll even let you guys take a look at it if that's okay.
I'll make a motion and we allow the attorney to draft the letter to the properties on Dewey Street that are not annexed yet, explaining why the annexation, pros and cons.
I'll second it.
If we have a motion and a second to allow the attorney to draft a letter to, uh, send to the property owners on Dewey Street as to why we would like to annex, uh, properties from West Street all the way to Kenilworth. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Go ahead. The question I have in that, if they're not hooked up to sewer, there's a timeframe they have to get hooked up, correct? Yeah, then they're mandated to be.
90 days.
No, I don't, just throw that out there, just, I don't know if we should advise them of that.
I, I would advise, no, hold nothing back. Advise them of everything, so.
Jimmy, how close is their sewer?
It's all up front. It's all there.
It's all there. All they got to do is tap in and then, right?
Yep. Their money taps there for them.
You guys are right on the ball.
And they are, but then there's going to be issues like, well, waiting, tap fees. I.
Yeah, I know. We're going to hear everything.
Pros and cons.
Well, I think the town has to do the same thing in that situation is we have to look at what the pros and the cons are, make them decisions, just like they do, you know?
Any other, any other new business?
George. Old business now. No business now.
No business? Other old business? Any new business? What you got in hand? What I got in my hand? No, it's the next thing.
15th. Well, that's good.
All right. So moving on, IMPA and TOPS tax abatement forms.
No, I have, I'm older.
No, should be up there wrong. You don't have TOPS tonight?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
You've got IMPA and ITAMCO.
Okay.
So the IMPA tax abatement started in 2015, so this will be year seven. Uh, expires 2025. Uh, Matt Lynch member didn't retain any jobs, so they are in compliance. Uh, the ITAMCO tax abatement, this is the last year for it. So they'll be at the, at the bottom level, which is what, 10, 10%?
10.
Yeah. Uh, they were supposed to recreate three jobs, which obviously they're, they're in compliance. You can see they've added more than that because they've combined their factory, which is better for us.
Thank you.
So those are both in compliance. Uh, we'll have, we'll have to talk about the TOPS one at the next one, because I didn't have a chance to work on that one yet.
If you want, we can just pass all three of them, because Derek would like a chance to look at them also. We didn't pass them at the next meeting.
You mean table all three?
Table.
Make a motion to table the, uh, IMPA and ITAMCO tax abatement till the next meeting so we can evaluate all of them at the same time. We have one more that's outstanding yet that's due right now.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to table the tax abatement forms for IMPA and TOPS and ITAMCO.
Yeah, all three.
Okay, all three of them to the next meeting.
Ten.
Yeah, uh, they were supposed to re, create three jobs, which obviously they're, they're in compliance, you can see they've added more than that because they've combined their factory, which is better for us. So those are both in compliance, uh, we'll have, we'll have to talk about the TOPS one at the next one, cause I didn't have a chance to work on that one yet.
If you want, we can just pass all three of them, cause Derek would like a chance to look at them also. We didn't pass them at the next meeting.
You mean table all three?
Table.
Make a motion to table the, uh, IMPA and ITAMCO tax abatements till the next meeting, so we can evaluate all of them at the same time, we have one more that's outstanding yet that's due right now.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to table the tax abatement forms for IMPA and TOPS and ITAMCO.
Yeah, all three.
Okay, all three of them, to the next meeting, any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Is TOPS still open though, that building?
Yeah.
Well, I'm assuming they're locked in for.
Well.
Three more years, but I'm getting there right now.
Uh, any other new business? No, 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 okay, Department Head Reporters, police.
So, two twelve West Walnut, right across the road.
Yeah.
So that guy's been given several tickets with junk vehicles and junk around the, the house. He's also been wrote, written a letter, they cleaned it up in thirty days, cleaned it up, he's made a lot of progress. But if you notice, there's still stuff around the, so thirty days is up, so it's up to you guys.
What is the next step?
I think Derek was writing a letter and we're gonna do the same as Mora.
Who is it?
Right across the street, Kenzie, if you remember, the conflict, so I've been dealing with this for about, I don't know, four months.
I'll make a motion to have the town attorney, Derek Jones, drop a official letter from the town, or give me a, uh, owner of two twelve West Walnut Street.
He can't.
So do we have to get, uh, Mr., uh?
Well, that's the, I, I wrote it to the, the, not the owner, I wrote, so if you remember right, we had the, the owner, we had the conflict, so I started all from the beginning and gave it to the grandson who lives there, Storm Kenzie. And that's still a conflict. Okay, well, I don't know what else to do.
Can Mr. Huff do that?
No, uh, nobody in my office. Oh, okay, nobody. But, um, I can see if, I think we've had either Jeff Hugian or, um, Lindsay. I think Lindsay could possibly take care of that for us.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I can help her out with like the forms and all that stuff and say, this is what we've done in the past, but.
I understand.
Yeah.
So now you'll make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to, uh, have an attorney send an official letter from the town to the owner of two twelve West Walnut Street for code, uh, violations after repeated attempts from the police chief to get things corrected.
Owner or?
Owners.
Other than the owner, don't you?
Starts with the owner, okay, you gotta start with the owner and then they're gonna point fingers and I understand how this goes, but, yeah.
We do have a motion and a second to have an attorney send a letter to, uh, the owner of the property at two twelve West Walnut, uh, for violations that they've been cited and everything else been timed, so, um, so we're out on that, any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed?
Two twelve, yeah.
Two twelve.
So, the next one would've been seven eleven North Michigan, Mc, McAlvin, I'm thinking, that's not right. McAlvin, McAlvin, nuisance out here north of bike cases across Casey's parking lot with a trailer.
Right, McAlvin.
Yeah, McAlvin, that's it, I'm sorry, I guess I got Alvin. Um, so he's been written a warning, or given a warning, I wrote him a ticket, I wrote him a letter also, um, for, but the letter's saying he's got thirty days to comply also, we've been around, done that route with him before, um, his thirty days isn't quite up yet. So, remember you were asking about that.
Yeah, so where's his thirty days at? Twenty-nine and a half days ago.
No.
I don't.
It's been like fourteen days on the county court.
I think two weeks, yeah.
Last time I had some.
Or which, I could talk to.
Well, you did get any more?
Chuck, is that property even being used according to the zoning for that property, the way, I mean, is it intended or? Is there a loophole, I mean, I guess I don't know.
Um, I'll check here just a second, I, um, was going to let you know that this morning Gordon Food Service truck was backed up there open, they're unloading food off there to some of the.
Right.
Vendors. You said that address is, is seven eleven? Seven eleven.
North Michigan.
We looked through this when we, when he bought it and.
Zone B two, I think.
Well, last time.
Highway business.
I got to the letter last time that he got it cleaned up once, but never went to the attorney's, but we're getting closed now.
I've just been hearing a lot around town about that property, you know.
Well, there's like a lot of it.
It is on me too. So that's business highway, so. Can they use it as they are? No, I don't believe so, that's just my feeling. It's not like they're, have, they have a business that comes here, they're using it for a parking lot. They're using it for storage.
Yeah, there's not technically any business.
No, not, there's not a business running out there.
So at the end of the two weeks then, we'll just, we'll wait until next meeting and have, see where we're at? Everybody okay with that?
Maybe if you have something to, I don't know, or something.
Okay, yes, that's what we'll do on that, go ahead.
So, the, the, the grass, the coddle thing, I, I do believe I gave a ticket to that guy, that I, if I remember, he lives in Knox or somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, I think I did, I'll bet he said, but we gave sixteen citations and thirty-seven warnings for grass that, in that week. So, huh, what else does?
I've seen people not take care of the property.
Hey, it costs me twenty-five dollars for gas every time I move twice a week.
It does.
It's hard to own a property and get care of it.
You guys had the email from Lisa, I'm okay with just having it fixed when we can and using our law enforcement fund for the equipment and.
Yeah.
Could we not turn that into the insurance?
Yeah.
Which also, the other truck, the old truck that we had that we're keeping, it's gonna be the SRO, the solenoids went out in the transmission, so, I think I talked to.
Talked to me about it too.
We, um, that's supposed to be fixed tomorrow, and that's gonna be like a thousand dollars, so I thought, we can still use the, our fund because, as I, today I got an email from the auditor's office, we got four thousand. I think sixty-one percent of six thousand, which is like lower four thousand, four thousand something, for the city county, county court costs for our orders tickets that we turn into the court, or take, Derek takes your court. As long as you guys are okay with that.
Um, we do well with that, guys, just so you know, and it's just an oversight, I think, on your, I'll put it in paper and read it. Like, yeah, nobody else takes advantage of this and, I mean, we've done very well with this for many, many.
And last, when, while you guys were talking, I had a phone call from Rich Miller, um, my hazard charger, there's a pool of oil underneath it in the garage, so, I don't know where that's going. So, kind of a heads up.
Dodge, man, I tell you, Dodge is.
Well, I'm still waiting for the Ford.
You should order a new truck.
We'll try, we did. Um, I think that's all I got, unless you guys have anything for me.
Get a quote on the oil leak, see what's wrong with it.
See what's wrong, I don't even know if it's, I don't know yet. Unless they forgot to put the, I don't know, who knows? I think that's happened before.
It could.
Not here.
It could've been something simple as a washer, yeah, bolt mill up and.
Hopefully it's nothing but, usually things come in three.
Have you gotten an oil change lately?
That would be the, I don't know, I, I don't know when they've gotten a change. I can't remember coming, seeing the bill, but I think sometimes they take the bill right to you, don't they, make sure he does?
But you know when it goes in, right?
Sometimes, I've been gone this week though.
Yeah.
Hey Cory, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going back to like the lawns and the citations and things like that. Um, I know you're probably pretty familiar with a lot of the people who live in this town, obviously, but around about like number, like what roundabout number do you think are, um, those houses like have elderly people where they might not be able to take care of their lawn? Or single, um, parents or, you know, lower income base, like?
So what I've always done, what I've always done in the past is I don't like writing a citation, especially for stuff like that, not my thing, I don't get my rocks off on that, that being said.
At least write that from the record.
That being said, um, like, uh, what I did was with the sixteen, and this is how I kinda approached it, if I kept dealing, dealing with the same people over and over again, that's who got the tickets, if I can remember dealing with them. But then I've had other people that kind of, that I gave the tickets to, there was several that, if they got it mowed right away and it came up to them and they had a legitimate issue or whatever, I disregarded the ticket, I'm, the whole idea is, I think, to get them to mow it, not punish them, but then again, I get tired of dealing with the same people over and over again. There's some, I think there is some, I think there's some people that legitimately have problems, yeah, and I think I brought it, I brought that up, like, what's his name was having an issue, um, he's gone now, um.
Keibert.
Yeah.
John Keibert.
He's having problems, but, you know, and.
How many times over the years have I said?
I don't.
You let beside the person, ask to help them, don't bitch about it, go help them.
Yeah, but that's, I can't, I can't.
Yeah, but not everybody.
I agree.
How many times have I heard that?
Which is, yeah, and that's what I mean, you know, if it wasn't for, if it wasn't for Holly, like, there are many times that I probably would've got a ticket when I lived near him, so, I mean, that was my concern, was just making sure that the people, um, who might need help get it, hopefully.
I think if you ask some of them, it's been on here a little bit longer, that I'm probably known for being too lenient with some of them, I, I don't like giving the tickets, I mean.
We don't need your money. But it's just, if you've kinda put a little fear into them, it gets, some people just don't wanna do it.
No, I actually get tired of it.
I was just curious as to, you know, what's at my lips, like.
Angie, I will say this, uh, as long as I've been here and on the police commission many, many years, we always see this as the first part of every spring, there, there always is an influx at first, then they kinda, then you start having your habitual ones the rest of the summer, and Cory knows who they are, most of us know who they are, and same ones every year that let their grass get this tall and their weeds, and that's the ones that usually get the tickets and get stuck to it.
And that's where some, I think Angie's discretion is nice to have, not using some of the, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
You're late.
Ran here. Yeah.
Let us finish this and I'll go back.
I'm sorry. That's, I'm just hit, and that's all I have, I think.
Okay, utilities?
Yeah, um, looks like the paving's gonna start next week, they're getting a schedule about a month, so, something, they're gonna be moving on it pretty quick. Um, we had a meeting with Nipco on the gas for Deerfield, that went very well, so, process has started on that, I think it's gonna take, it's gonna take a couple months to get the paperwork and stuff, but we've got a schedule, we're gonna do it in phases, so they're, they're willing to work with us on all that. We don't have a cost of what that's gonna, you know, be yet, but we'll find out, um. The fairgrounds signed the utility agreement that we, that we passed, so that's all done. Um, had several issues uptown, like you, like you know, uh, one of the issues that we're dealing with is, they hit the street light circuit, it was poured inside the curb, so there's really no way to get it out or whatever, so they yank it all out, so, we, we had materials ordered, we got away from, put the, pull the, pour the curb, we're gonna put the line back next to that and then we'll get everything hooked back up, but it's, it's, it could be a few weeks before that, so, everything down South Michigan's out and then East Walnut's out, um. I guess that's about all I have. Deerfield, we got the water in Kenilworth Road, we're into the park, we got a hydrant in there, so, we're waiting for the weather to break where we can get back out there and get the rest finished up, and then we're gonna put water in the line, sanitize it, all that, and then we'll start putting taps in, so everything's going good out there, moving along.
Jamie, down here on, uh, East Walnut, Aaron Wager's sister, what's going on there?
They've got a leak.
Well, it's on their side of the meter.
It's on their side, we gave them five days, so, to fix it, so, they've got till Friday to get it fixed, we're gonna shut it off.
Okay, and this valve, uh?
I call, locates in for that and we're gonna be working on that real, real quick. I don't know if it'll be yet this week, but next week we'll get on it if we don't get to it, that's it, Williamson First, there's a, um, valve leaking, we messed with it the other day and it dried up for a couple days, now it's starting leaking again, so, we're, we're, we're gonna have to dig it up and fix it, I don't know what it's gonna take yet, but.
I did see a utility marketing vehicle on the street down there by, uh, we were talking about, uh,
Jane Towns.
Last night, I think, when I come into town, yeah, cause I want to look at that other stuff that you talked about. So I, I know they're planning to work on that, so.
Yeah.
Is that it then, for you?
That's it for, for, for now.
I was already thinking sewer plant, good.
Yeah.
Looks good, but.
I read his.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going by, but Jamie had a comment for a while, so I thought I'd ask you.
Yeah, we had a pump fail out at, uh, the pond, I don't know, I think it was last week. We were out there till like after midnight fixing it, but, um, we're down to one pump out there, he's looking for parts for it.
Capacitor is that hard to find right now?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Wow.
Well, they don't have, it's eight weeks, they're eight weeks out for a capacitor and I don't know what pumps are, so he's looking for, he's trying to find one online, but we have, we have, uh, down on Dewey Street, same pump, so if we run into a problem, we can always pull one of those pumps and put it over there and get us by, so we, we've got a plan for it, not a huge deal.
I just have to say, we're, we're into this over a year now with Ask Berry, I look, I read your reports every time we meet, I mean, I, I still think that's one of the best moves we've made as a council.
I've talked to some.
Just to take the worry off our heads, the pressure off of Jamie.
I've talked to some people in the city of South Bend, they use them too, and they have nothing but good to say about them, they've had the same things that we have and they've straightened them out, so they are, it's probably one of our better moves, yeah.
It's, it's run well.
Yeah.
Economic Development Report Director.
You got it.
I got it.
I think I've sent you all the updates since then.
Since no update.
The only other thing that came up yesterday, there was a parking lot issue downtown, I think Jamie got a solution figured out with them. Obviously nine, we've been finding foundations and everything else, so, there's a wet spot from the foundation, lot lack there, the ground kinda moved in, so they did, he worked with, well, actually Chip just happened to be here because of that Nipco meeting, so he went down and worked with Jamie and I think they got a solution, so, just so you're clear, this is all, a lot of this stuff is all on us, just because it's.
There's gonna be some extras, isn't there?
Yeah.
Anytime you do a project, you're, you're gonna find things that were unseen, so.
Never imagined how much concrete they found and.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you see, I, I can imagine. Is there, I, I thought I heard, is there progress being made on, uh, ACDC building the house at Plum Street? I thought I heard somewhere that they were drawing plans.
We haven't moved that one yet, we just sold a lot at School Street, uh, we're kinda holding back on that till we find, we still haven't agreed on a house plan down there. It's gotta be the right one, we just haven't, and I'm too busy trying to get that stuff.
I just asked you the question, just.
Oh, John was hot to trot on that, I think, yeah, selling prices are great, but building costs are also.
Uh, I understand.
So, we've been a little hesitant and they, I'm.
Motion to accept utility, uh, Department Head Reporters, are you able to go ahead?
I'm personally. Just wanted to let her by now that we do have a new EMT, Annalise Lindsay.
Yeah.
Bourbon, she has her first and second class firefighter, so, she was out there training last, or Monday night with us, a very nice girl, good disposition, she's glad to be here, so. Thank for that.
When the fire territory talked to her, uh, I think she's kind of in for the long haul, she liked, uh, the benefit package and everything we have and, and I think she's gonna be here for a while, I see she's pulled a lot of shifts, so she's, uh, definitely working on shift. Yeah.
Jeez, guys, that's.
Yeah, she's very nice.
Glad to hear that.
She put up with me on already Monday, so she passes.
She's still here?
Yeah, and she's still here for that.
So with that, I'll make a motion to accept the Department Head Reporters.
We have a motion and a second to accept Department Head Reporters, any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chris Van Zijn, you're late, but I'm gonna give you time.
I really appreciate it, I'm sorry I was late, I lost track painting and then sprinted here. Um, I was hoping to do some stuff on the sidewalks, uh, this summer, um, specifically, uh, we've got the brewery down there, we've got the restaurant down there, and we'd like to put some tables outside and actually try and make, bring some of the attention outside, bring some of the action outside, make the street look a little bit more lively. Um, so I came last year and kinda just said that I'd be coming this year, hey, I'm hoping that if there's any local policy that, that we would need to comply with, we can find out what that is, we already talked to the state and the state requires us to cordon off the area that, that, for our liquor permit, that if we were gonna serve beer outside, that it would be in that area. Um, but basically, I'm just looking for a small space and I'm more than happy to email you the documents, you asked me to go up, come up with a two-page document, I did, and then I ran here, so sorry, uh, but I'm more than happy to email it to the board so that we could discuss it at the next meeting, or if you guys have any rules about what percentage of the sidewalk you'd be comfortable with people taking, or if you even want, and this isn't just for us, if you wanna do a policy so that other restaurants as well here downtown could potentially have outdoor seating. I think when you guys put in an amphitheater, like you've got music out. I think when you guys put in an amphitheater, like you've got music out there in your new park, like, we're all gonna want to do it, so. And I think especially on days like Saturday during the day and Sunday, uh, uh, looks a little slow. Saturday and Friday night, you know, you can't find a parking spot downtown, but I think having people out there will make the town look a little more full and busy.
Are you talking about wanting to have something out there all the time, Chris?
No, it'd be something, we'd break it down.
Like every night, like you know, certain?
Yeah, it's just something where we put out little metal railings and maybe we take up whatever you guys decide, thirty percent of the width of the sidewalk, or, or whatever the case may be. We put four two-person tables out there, right up against my building, and then, and then that would be it. Um, if, for some reason you don't want to do that, I'd also like to put out three kind of rocking chairs and just leave them there in front of my building if that's something you'd be interested in, but that's a completely different issue. I just want to try and, I want to try and make it look like it's a walk-in space.
I'm on cordon with you till you mention the rocking chair.
Well, it's really just about that.
That's kind of the whole principle of having the thing across the street, for people to kind of go over there to relax.
Yeah, and that's.
I want that bar there, I want that rocking chair.
How wide is the sidewalk, Shane, do you know?
I don't.
Look to me like they're about eight foot, does that sound right?
I don't think so.
No, yeah, there, so there's, there's two big squares that are each six foot in width. And then there's the, the brick trim, and then there's another about a foot.
So.
So, so you're talking about maybe fourteen foot, something like that, twelve foot to the brick, yeah, twelve foot brick to building, yeah.
And what he was, he showed me what he's taught to do is divide that so that the, outside of it, people could still walk.
Yeah. So on a fourteen-foot sidewalk, you'd still have eight foot that we're not even messing with over here, you know, we're not, uh, blocking any, you know, passageway through the.
Caffeteries, Culvers done that.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's exactly what we're talking about, right there.
I've seen it in different places.
I, I think it's a cool idea.
My, my next question, my next question, or I guess my next concern, it's not really a concern, it's just a question I have really, I think, is, is there anything in our land use book that prohibits that or anything?
I'm not gonna say without looking.
Yeah, that's, that's my next question is to, I think that, yes, the council would have a say, but I think they also, we need to refer to our land use book for that area to make sure that that's all the compliance as well.
That's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm really just looking to start a process. Last year I came for one meeting and talked to George at the end of a meeting about it, and we just kind of spitballed some ideas. This year I'm saying, hey, we'd like to start this sometime, whether it's, you know, next week or whether it's in July. You know, I, I'm looking to try and come up with a formula or a process with somebody so that we can get this.
Might be such a thing as you may have to go in front of the local zoning, that controls that book.
We've already done this once, the pizza place does this.
Do they?
You guys okay to, what we had to do, they had to keep it up
Up against the building.
Next to the building, like we're talking.
Sidewalks look like they're sixteen foot. Yeah, that's, I just measured them and, and you're right.
Awesome.
There's a whole money room there.
No, I'm not questioning, I just want to make sure that we follow all the rules, cause sure enough, if we don't, down the road somewhere to come back to haunt us.
My food's delicious.
You said we looked and there wasn't anything, we didn't have an ordinance against that, so.
We seem to have a habit about having things come back to bite us.
So when, when did we do this?
The pizza place. They, remember they had the little patio tables with the umbrellas outside, they came in front of us and asked us if they could, if they kept them up against the building and not too wide, you know what I mean, then that's, we okayed that, we were like, yes.
All checked into at that time.
Well, it's, we're traffic downtown.
Right.
But.
I think it's a great idea.
They've updated their books since then, too.
Wax wall, one of the, has there been new rules?
How about, let me kind of revisit this, take a look at the land use development code and existing ordinances and report back at the next meeting?
I think that, that would be very.
My concern is just making sure that the, you know, the people with disabilities can function and walk around.
Sixteen, sixteen to the next meeting?
No.
Oh, yeah, we have one in the first month, yeah. Better than that?
Oh, no, absolutely, and, uh, who do you want me to email that two page or two, the?
Eric.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you do that?
Yep. Alright, thank you. All again. I'll come get my free meal though.
See ya.
You just said that in public.
A joke. Okay. It's no worse than what he said.
This shoe fits his rocks off, one of the president's free meal.
Claims.
Okay, so you have the claims in front of you, um, from May third till May sixteenth. The claims are a hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
I know, and you think she doesn't have to put them right?
That's why you have that thing that says view and. You think this is the first time you looked at it?
No, I've looked at it. Four or five.
I've already seen it today.
Yeah, I did too, I've had all of them.
I spent my lunch going over to the town back because I had no better time.
Alright, it's up to you then.
Make a motion to accept the claims from May third through May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the claims from May third to May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Any further comment on it? If not, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn.